Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome to the Town of Stellerton Council meeting, April 8th, 2024, 5:30 PM start time here at the council chambers. The agenda is in front of us. Are any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have one addition, Your Worship, under correspondence. I'd like to add a thank you from the Stellerton Westville Police Youth Corps.
Okay, thank you. We'll make that a six, or eight D. And if that's all, we'll ask for motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'll move, Your Worship.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Moved by Counselor Pence, seconded by Counselor Knight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. AM 2 has approved the amendments. Distribute your electronic, they're also a pair of the pack. Are there any errors or omissions?
I so move.
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Wong, seconded by Deputy Mayor Campbell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Hearing none, we'll move on to a presentation for the 2024-2025 Operations and Capital Budget to build the tax rates for 2024-25.
Council has their packages in front of them. So we'll start with the general operating budget, which should be the first in your package. We are presenting a balanced budget as required, and we're proposing no tax rate increases. The assessments for 2024 residential and resource at $229,365,700. Commercial assessment at $94,596,200. Maintaining the rates at $1.88 residential and resource and commercial at $4.30 per $100 of assessment gives us total taxes of $8,379,712. And that amount carries down into the budget details below. To describe the budget for '23-24 is your left-hand column. The middle column is projected for '23-24, not final, but projected. And the budget for '24-25 is the right-hand column. So total assessable property taxes at the amount of $8,379,712. That's an increase in residential of $285,000 and commercial for $359,000. To note, this is tax rate, all-inclusive. The town does not have any additional user fees. Special tax agreements for $21,000. That is a calculation based on revenue for both Alliant and Heritage Gas. The de-transfer taxes is $100,000 of revenue and $100,000 of expense estimated. This money is collected and remitted for the Wellness Center and the hospital, so net zero impact on the budget. Grants in lieu of taxes at $217,184. Those grants are for the post office, CRCMP, the Department of Mines, Nova Scotia Power, and fire protection at NSCCC. Other revenue owned sources at $166,320. We are projecting a decrease over the prior year, but this is where we do conservative budgeting. This is mostly interest, the impact of interest. So it also includes dispatch, and of course, we're no longer doing dispatch for the Firefighters Association. It also includes sale of service, and we're not doing recreation programming for day camps, so it's reduced for that as well. Unconditional transfers, this is the financial capacity grant and the HST offset, both of which are outside the control of the town, budgeted at $520,684. Conditional transfers at $102,5000. That's for street crime and student funding, as well as for the MPAL. And of course, we're reduced for MPAL as we're not having a full-time recreation person. Internal transfers at $235,175. For the '24-25 budget year, this is the transfer from the water utility to the General Operating Fund to cover the administrative costs funded by the General Operating Fund on behalf of the utility. To note, the '23-24 projected, we are projecting a $150,000 deficit. So we are anticipating both the transfer from the water utility plus a transfer from operating reserve to balance '23-24. Overall, there's about a 3.3% increase in revenue to $9,742,575. On the expenditure side, total legislative services at $124,735. That's always higher than actual projected because you don't tend to spend all of the money budgeted. Travel expenses are budgeted at $1,000 per person, generally not used. We also have the NSFM and the FCM conferences in those numbers. General government services at $1,151,703. There is an increase here. There's the overall increase of 2.25%. There's also funding there for work on the town hall out of the security assessment. Sick leave valuation is to be done this year. We have the elections, so the election costs. There's increasing grants, annual grants as requested by council. And there's also an increase for some heritage projects. Protective services policing at $2323,472. This is a small decrease over the prior year. This does include the, an estimate for the new contract, but the prior year had additional sick leave costs, which we're not anticipating to be repeated in the current year. That's the reason for the decrease. Protective services fire for $551,254. There is a decrease within fire for the fire protection, which is paid to our water utility. And there is an increase for repointing of the brick on the building and costs for new members such as uniforms. Transportation services at $2357,767. There is an increase here as well. There's an additional person whose focus will be on horticultural for the town. There is the normal 2.25% increase. There's also summer standby charges, which have been budgeted for not used in prior years. We always allow room for repair and maintenance on vehicles for unexpected situations. Gas and diesel is up. There's an increase for the sweeper truck. We didn't have it for as much last year as anticipated for some signage, as well as regular storm sewer maintenance. Environmental services at $863,665. This is a decrease over projected for '23-24 for the revised funding formula for Eric. Recreation services at $143,800. Just to note, the Wellness Center is, would be considered a recreation service. We just defined it as a separate line item, so recreation services in total would be the combination of the two. But at $143,800, it is a decrease over the prior year as we're not having a full-time person. So with no day camps. But it does include regular maintenance on the fields and $20,000 for some playground pieces. Picto County Wellness Center at $375. This is an estimate of the share of operations for the Town of Stellerton for the Wellness Center. Cultural services at $83,892. That's the community center, library, and deans. Nothing significant over the prior year. Financing for principal and interest is up to $592,273. We've added the principal payment for the curbs and the fire truck. There's also interest for the fire truck for the full year. We were only a half a year last year, plus the equipment that is planned in the capital budget for the current year. Outside service providers to the town, $149,680. This is PVSC, Chad, Picto County Transit, and Homecoming. Nothing significant year over year. Outside service providers province, this number has decreased to $925,334, which is now just the school board. We don't have corrections, and we don't have the housing deficit anymore. Those will be funded by the province. And the transfer, the de-transfer tax, again, we had $100,000 in revenue, so we have $100,000 estimate in expense. And that, again, is the remittance to the Wellness Center and hospital. Balance to zero. Overall, total expenditures at $9,742,575, which is a 3.3% increase over the projected for '23-24. Any questions on general operating? Okay, if not, I'll move on to the general capital budget for the, sorry, the capital budget for the General Operating Fund. We have a total of $880,000 budgeted for capital. Sidewalk plow and attachment for $200,000. Two public works for $180,000. This is part of our annual replacement program. We're working toward getting to one year, but to catch up, we have two trucks for the current year. A one-ton truck, we are replacing a 2002, '04 model, $7,545. There's a required DFO study, a stage discharge curve update, and fish assessment on fish ladder and spillway. That's professional, professional fees for that project. Power and pumping at $219,393. This is allowing for a general increase. This is both power and pumping repairs and maintenance, as well as electricity. Purification at $710,302. We're continuing the powdered activated carbon for the better test and quality of the water. There's increase for testing and for the training to maintain certifications at the water treatment plant. Transmission and distribution at $215,501. We always budget for unexpected repairs and maintenance. This would be the water main breaks. We hope to come in less than that number, but we anticipate the worst-case scenario. Admin in general at $262,675. Most of this is paid to the General Operating Fund, which is to fund the administrative costs because the water utility does not have its own administrative department. Depreciation at $425,000. That is a calculation relative to asset base. That money is actually transferred from the Water Utility Operating Fund and put into reserve, the purpose of which is to continually replace the water utility assets. Taxes at $138,929. That, again, is paid to the Town of Stellerton General Operating Fund and with no tax rate increase. Overall, total expenditures at $29,344. There's interest in principal on debt at $435,704. Again, decreasing, interest is decreasing as the debt is slowly decreasing. We need a transfer from surplus to balance the budget at $311,373. We're projecting $274,856 for '23-24. The utility does have an operating surplus of over $1 million, just over $1 million at the end of March 2023. So both of those transfers projected '23-24 and budget '24-25 are covered by the current surplus. Okay. Then the water utility capital projects. The PLC upgrade, that is basically the brains of the computer at the water treatment plant for $120,000. Fence at the reservoir, this is to replace and move it to the top of the hill for $27,000. And then the infrastructure project, now this is the water line portion of those infrastructure projects. Kirk Avenue at $590,000 and the completion of Claremont for $708,000. So overall, water utility capital projects at $1445,000. Funded $926,000 from water depreciation and ICIP federal and provincial funding for $519,000.
Questions for Brenda? No resolution read for this one?
But to approve.
Just to approve?
I so move.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Wong, seconded by Deputy Mayor Campbell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy. Thank you very much, Brenda.
I hope my thingy was on. It just...
Thank you, Brenda, for your work on this. We appreciate it. Thanks to all the staff. Okay, so we're going to move on to a couple of proclamations. The first one is Lyme Disease Awareness Month for May. Whereas Lyme disease is a serious illness caused by the bite of a black-legged tick infected with bacterium borreella bugifuri, and whereas black-legged ticks carry a variety of diseases or illnesses that can now be found in all parts of Nova Scotia, and whereas awareness, education, and practicing preventive measures such as daily tick checks and proper tick removal can help reduce your chance of contracting tick-borne illnesses, therefore, it be resolved that I, Mayor Daniel McGilvery, Stellerton Town Council, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Lyme Disease Awareness Month. Have a motion, please.
So move.
Second that, Your Worship. Susan, do we have lighting for that? They request that we light, that we have lighting for it, do we? Okay, thank you.
So moved by Counselor Pence, seconded by Counselor Knight. There's no further questions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Next is a proclamation for Gaelic Nova Scotia Month. Whereas 2024 marks the 28th anniversary of Gaelic Nova Scotia Month, which is a time to embrace, honor, and celebrate the history, culture, language, contribution, and achievements of Gaels across the province. And whereas Gaelic culture is an integral part of the identity of Nova Scotian Gaels, represent one of the earliest non-Indigenous cultural groups to settle in Mi'kmaq, whereas new generations of language learners and cultural champions are carrying on and building upon the legacy of Gaelic Nova Scotia tradition bearers. And whereas the Town of Stellerton is committed to collaborating with Gaelic communities to support the growth of Gaelic as part of the linguistic landscape of Nova Scotia through opportunities for language acquisition and capacity building within communities to ensure Gaelic language and culture will thrive in Stellerton. Therefore, I, Mayor Daniel McGilvery, Stellerton Town Council, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Gaelic Nova Scotia Month in the Town of Stellerton.
So move.
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Pence, seconded by Deputy Mayor Campbell on the question.
Yeah, on the question, do they raise a flag?
That was, so we want to say that?
Is there a date for that, Susan?
That will be up to council.
Do you want to say it now?
Sure.
The only day we can't do is May 1st because that's the...
They're not available then.
...being Halifax. April 24th, Wednesday, April 24th?
Oh, you want to do it before May?
Uh, yeah, we should wait, you're right.
Yeah.
Friday, May 3rd?
Yep, sounds good.
Works for me.
Yeah.
What time of day do you want?
Usually, probably they're coming from Halifax, so you want to do like a 11?
11.
11 sounds good.
Gary's going to wear his kilt.
I'll wear my kilt.
I can reach out to them and work that out with them.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship.
11 on May 3rd. And I will send that out for council.
Okay, good.
Perfect. Um, so did I call for the vote on it?
Yes, you just know, you didn't call for a vote. It's been moved and seconded.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. We're going to move on to reports from staff. The first one, 7A Chief Mayor Kovak. Stellerton Police Service, the Stellerton Police Commission met last week a couple times. Went through this report. Any questions or comments on it? I don't have any question or comments. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, have a motion to approve it, please?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Knight, seconded by Deputy Mayor Campbell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Uh, 7B is Fire Chief Michael Selvin, the Fire Department reporter. Is there any question or comments on that?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Moved by Counselor Pence, seconded by Counselor Knight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. 7C is Paige Draper, Marketing Communications. Any question or comments on that one? Just mentioned the volunteer reception is Thursday, April 18th of the Stellerton Fire Hall. We're going to recognize our valued volunteers at that time.
Good.
Homecoming is taking place July 24th to 28th, 28th. And there's, on our social media posts, there's important highlights, there's employment opportunities. We're accepting applications for several positions right now within the town. There are multiple summer positions that are open until April 14th for submissions. And a position as Parks Beautificacy Coordinator with Public Works opened until April 11th. That's a new position right out of this year in our budget. No further comments or questions. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Knight, seconded by Deputy Mayor Campbell. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. 7D is the Town Engineer Blaine Murray. Questions or comments on that one?
I so move.
Moved by Counselor Wong, seconded by Counselor Pence. Just on the question, I'll highlight a couple of things. The Kirk Avenue infrastructure upgrades, the tender came in April 4th, so that should be done now?
Yeah, Blaine will have full report on those tenders at committee of the whole for your approval.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. And just want to read a couple of things. Public Works proposed a capital purchase for a new backhoe snow bucket, which we approved in council at our budget because they thought the old one could not be repaired. But Public Works had I, Mass, and Company Benson sheet metal and staff weld the material together, and the department will no longer need a capital purchase, save the town $15,000 to $18,000. Just thank you to Public Works for that. And the lack of snow and merch ladders, the staff to perform long overdue maintenance and plow equipment. Multiple snow and ice events without breaks can make it harder to perform equipment maintenance. The same people who plow the streets are the same people who fix water breaks, perform maintenance to sewer, streets, and buildings. Unlike bigger municipalities who have dedicated staff to each of these activities, our staff are involved with it all, so thank you to Public Works for that as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
On the question, Worship, I just want to bring up a point and thank the Public Works there. For the heritage rooms are really good and coming over. We depend on them wholly to have the heritage room painted clean or whatever needs to be done, and they do a great job. Just want to thank them for that.
On the question. We have a very versatile bunch of employees, I would say.
Versatile and dedicated. We appreciate them. Thank you, Counselor Pence. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Move on to reports or correspondence. 78A is Province of Nova Scotia.
Uh, yes, correspondence was received from Municipal Affairs and Housing on March 28th, 2024. Dear mayors and wardens, it has been a tremendously difficult 18 months for Nova Scotia as it relates to extreme weather events. We've endured generational hurricanes, wildfires, and floods that have had a devastating impact on our communities and the residents we serve. Municipalities play a significant and key role in emergency preparedness, response, and recovery. I want to acknowledge your leadership during these difficult events and thank you for your commitment to the response. We know that climate change is causing more frequent and severe weather events, and as governments, we share a responsibility to work in collaboration to protect our communities. Historically, our emergency response has been, has been very effective. But with the increased intensity and frequency of events, we need to increase our capacity and strengthen our overall preparedness, response, and recovery. That is why today, March 28th, 2024, our government tabled legislation that will establish a new provincial department of emergency management. Once established, it is the intention that this new department will have a mandate to lead, direct, and support a coordinated whole-of-government response to emergencies and transition to a culture of preparedness across the province. Within this new department, we will work to strengthen our collaboration with communities and our partners across the province like municipalities, so we better, so we are better prepared for the future. We are also launching the Nova Scotia Guard, which will be a group of individuals and organizations from across the province who will help communities during and after emergencies. The Nova Scotia Guard will include volunteers with specialty skills such as firefighters, as well as other members of the public, to fill a variety of roles depending on the emergency needs. Those interested in volunteering to help Nova Scotia be ready in event of an emergency can let the province know by completing the early registration form at ns.211.ca. The legislation introduced today also requires the support of our municipal partners. In the months ahead, we look forward to working with you and speaking with you about regulations respecting the relationships between municipalities and regional emergency management offices, the provision of fire dispatch services through regional emergency management offices, the creation of vulnerable person registries and their implementation, as well as the development of a regional emergency alert system and the participation of municipalities in the system. This direction is built on significant engagement with Nova Scotians over the past year and focuses on three key areas: communication, coordination, and volunteer management. Combined, these efforts will result in greater preparedness, impact, and efficiency before, during, and after an emergency. Honorable John A. Lor, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing.
I'd like to thank Minister Lor for the letter and pleased to see the, I think it's the interest, or pleased the Department of Emergency Management, it's a new department, I think that's a great idea. And the Nova Scotian Guard, it sounds like a good idea as well. It'll be interesting to see how that plays out, so. Thank you to the province for that. Any question or comment?
I just, I think it's, our fire department is a big part of that. And of course, Susan, when we had the last one, yourself and Paige jumped in there when we had the floods down Blue Acres, I think we got a kind of a head start here on it.
Good point. Thank you, Counselor Knight.
Thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you. We don't need a motion for that?
Nope, just for information.
Move on to 8B, Province of Nova Scotia.
Uh, another piece of correspondence from Minister or Honorable John Lor, March 28th, 2024, and you are well aware of this one. Dear mayors and wardens, I am pleased to inform you that a significant milestone has been reached for our province and all municipalities. As of today, March 28th, a new service exchange agreement has been signed. Under this agreement, which comes into effect on April 1st, 2024, the province will be making an historical annual investment of $82 million. This is a $52 million increase from the $30 million in funding through annual municipal financial capacity grant. The collaborative spirit and dedication exhibited by both the province and municipalities over nearly two years of discussions have culminated in this agreement. It truly represents a comprehensive understanding of the evolving needs and aspirations of Nova Scotians, furthering the prosperity of our communities. As we move forward, I encourage you to review the details of the service exchange agreement. Thank you for your continued dedication to serving your communities. Together, we continue to make meaningful strides towards growth and well-being for all Nova Scotians. And that is where the corrections and housing is no longer a, an expenditure for the municipalities.
Which is a big bonus to the Town of Stellerton, so we once again thank the province for that.
It's a big cost.
A big cost. It's not on our shoulders anymore. We appreciate it. Uh, 8C?
I received a request from GFL Environmental on March 27th regarding a request for council for a noise bylaw exemption. On behalf of GFL Environmental, we are submitting this letter to request your consideration for an exemption to a bylaw that would allow us to service certain customers' solid waste streams before 7:00 AM. Under your noise bylaw, providing services to local business within Stellerton area is restricting our employees from serving these businesses safely and efficiently during a time when traffic flow is low. As an essential service provider, we do not want to see any business have their waste services disrupted as this can lead to unsightly garbage overflow and increased pest concerns. The customers who are affected by this bylaw are to name a few. Tim Hortons, Wholesale Club, Jubilee Avenue Doctor's Office, NSCCC Picto Campus, and Stellerton Town Hall. All these sites require early access, allowing GFL trucks to safely gain access to the waste containers before traffic becomes too heavy, which would become an unsafe environment for our employees, as well as motorists and pedestrians. Tim Hortons is one location that requires us to be in and out before 5:45 AM due to patrons filling up their drive-through area. Wholesale Club is another high-risk location where we must back in, out onto North Ford Street. This area needs to be serviced before 5:00 AM to allow safe entry and exit when traffic is not at a high volume. This site has also morning deliveries that would pose an access issue. Sovies is another location that requires early morning services. The offices need to be completed prior to staff arriving because their staff enter where the waste containers are placed. The Sovies store location must be completed before their delivery trucks arrive. Different times of the morning make it impossible to service their waste. As you can see, there are multiple locations that pose safety risks where traffic and parking are a concern. All locations are serviced for their waste and recycling needs multiple times per week. We do not want to see any business within the Town of Stellerton deal with service interruptions and request that you approve this exemption so we can safely provide these essential services to the town businesses' community. At no time do we want to cause a disturbance, and we do everything we can to minimize noise in residential areas. We cannot remove our backup alarms or caution strobe lights from our trucks under the Commercial Vehicle Act. And we do try to stay clear of certain areas, but unfortunately, some areas need to be accessed for early safety reasons. So if council is going to entertain a, an exemption, how that would work is you would have your first reading for an amendment to the bylaw in May. And in June, there would be a public hearing. And then in, in June, you'd have your second and final reading, which would provide the outcome of the public hearing.
I read through it, and for the most part, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, I was wondering, should we have the Police Commission look at that? Because it is a safety issue.
Uh, so the, the police have been contacted because they are the enforcers of the bylaws. And, and in speaking with the police and I and GFL, the only way around this is the exemption to the bylaw.
The only area that I haven't, I shouldn't say a question, is, is up here, um, you know, the side of the fire department. on the side of the fire department where the, used to be the doctor's office. Because, and I say that because there is residents there. And, you know, I don't know, they might not like the idea of five o'clock in the morning, whatever, somebody.
Well, it's come to your attention because there has been complaints.
Yeah, okay.
So that's why it has come to your attention.
The ones on Main Street, commercial areas is okay, but in my mind.
Ironically, that's where the complaint has come from.
Well, I guess the thing is, we're going to have a public meeting on it.
You will have to have a public meeting, so. My recommendation is for council to consider this with a first reading in May and with a public hearing in June.
Yeah, we should have a public.
With enough advertising.
No doubt we'll have a public hearing. I know, I know, I wouldn't want to be woken at five o'clock. Some people go to bed, some people work shift.
But I can understand GFL's.
Oh, yeah. They have a solid argument there, I, you know, I agree with that. I agree with they have a solid argument. And, you know, it is a safety issue and we're always on top of safety. But again, every decision we have to make, there's always a pros and cons to it. So, you know, if the public is not, if there's no adversity from the public, well then, okay.
All right, Susan, so we got to have.
I so move.
So, okay. So this is a first reading amendment in May.
And then a second reading and public hearing in June.
Correct.
I'll second that, Sue.
So moved by Counselor Wong, seconded by Counselor Pence, although in favor of saying aye. Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you.
It's a situation, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't.
One of those.
Unfortunately, most of the things we rule on were in the same boat. You know, there's always going to be somebody in favor and somebody against.
Very true. Okay, so move on to eight D, a thank you from the Stellerton Westville Police Corps.
Yes, so this is from the Stellerton Westville Youth Police Corps. So the donation we give them every year goes towards, they went to visit the Atlantic Police Academy. So they went overnight and by all accounts, had a wonderful, safe trip. So that's a thank you from them.
Nice to hear. Like seven, seven young, seven or eight young people went for the trip, so.
Yeah, from both Stellerton and Westville. And we had two of our, we had Sergeant Venus, Constable Morel, and I believe it was Acting Sergeant Clark from Westville. And forgive me, I can't remember the second person.
Well, that's great to have that support, yeah.
Definitely.
How does your uniforms look? Nice?
Yeah, they look sharp. Okay, Committee of the Whole, number nine, there's no reports. Number 10 is the intermunicipal amended agreement with Pitt County Partnership, four in all is the red.
Thank you, your worship. So I sit on the Board Liaison Committee. And this has been discussed amongst the six municipalities present and was voted on. In the, in short, what the amendments are, first thing is, we did an amendment last year for an additional year, that was only for one year. So this would be for the full five years because the first five years were done last year and we didn't have time to do another five years. So we extend only for one year with an additional money at the time. This time, it's going to be for five years and there is no addition in the money. So that is the essence of the amendments. In five A, there's also one caveat I want to bring up. So five A, the original clause states that the participating municipalities shall not exceed the contribution made by the province. Now, this was removed by the amendment. And the reason for it was because there is a new agreement that's being worked on between the partnership and the province that's hopefully going to come our way. Removing that clause will give more flexibility to the partnership. And no addition to the funding will be granted unless approved by all the municipalities and passed through motion. So there is no, we don't have any obligation at this point. The other thing that I want to bring to your attention is clause six A. The two major differences from the previous clause is that in the previous contract or agreement, the money was due on January 31st. Now it is due on April 1st. And the other thing that is a little bit of significant, not a lot, but you know, that is a change. Financially, that is. Previously, it was a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar contribution from all six municipalities. It will remain two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar this year. But starting next year, it will be two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar plus two percent cost of living increase. And that would be the only thing that's changing for six A. That is it for me. Any questions?
Oh, that sounds reasonable.
Yep.
Any questions for Counselor Wong?
Just asking, what's your opinion on how it's working, Simon?
I think it's working very good. There's multiple projects on the go and Wade will be here in May to present. And he will be here on a biannually basis, twice a year, to come and present. Wade is a new CEO for the partnership. He's an excellent individual, both from a professional and from a personal standpoint. I like the guy a lot. And not only that, he is very eager. And the amount of projects that's on the go are really good. The simple fact that he's walking the street, or he was walking the street before he got this promotion and he still is as a new CEO, talking to our businesses, see what they need. And at the same time, you know, working on some of the issues that affects our businesses from a succession planning perspective, from employment and shortage of employees. So, and at the same time, looking for projects that will benefit the whole county on a bigger scale. So there's many success stories from, you know, some of the bakeries that are opened in town and outside of the town and flower shops and other small businesses. And I know personally, one person that I know who approached me for some help in opening a small store that I'm directing them to the Pictocampus Partnership to help them establish. To be honest with you, and that's something that I have encountered early in my life here in Canada, is that you don't know what you don't know. So there's a lot of opportunities out there, whether it is from a funding perspective or whether it's just from a resource perspective that you don't know about or know how to maneuver the system in a way that will benefit you. And the assistance that the partnership is giving for those, for those small businesses is invaluable. Because again, first of all, people are busy just working. So getting into the research part of it is very hard. So when you have someone that is already proficient at research and have done it multiple times and have the resource to understand where all the funding is and where all the resources and what do they need to do, that has been very, very beneficial for those small businesses. And as you know, you know, ninety percent of our economy is built on small businesses. And don't quote me on that fact, but that's a number that I heard. Anyway, so yes, I am very excited about their work and we are looking forward for the future.
Thank you, Simon. And I know when it started up, of course, it wasn't going to happen overnight. Things like that have to build, you know, you can't expect it. My only concern was, and you seemed to have answered it for me, was the CAO. We seem to be changing CAOs. You know, we're going to three since we started, you know, which alarms me because getting the workforce and keep changing, it's not going to help going forward. But I hope the CAO stays and things work through. But from a small business perspective, we see it right here in Stellerton, like you say, the growth. Thank you very much for the report.
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you to Counselor Wong for serving the LOC. And I do concur, I think Wade Tebow is a great fit for the position of CAO. And occurring with Counselor Knight, I hope he stays around for a long time and helps build the partnership.
If everybody's okay with it, I would like to move the amendment.
Yeah, and I think Simon's a great fit for representing on that board too. I move to accept it.
The move by Counselor Wong, seconded by Counselor Knight. Is there any further questions? This means real quick a sign?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, no further questions, all those in favor of saying aye. Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Item eleven is the odd and definite statements from March 31st, 2023. Detective Kenny Wellness Center. Are they included in the pack for any questions?
Yes, it is.
Information is right. No motion then on that?
Nope, just for information.
And municipal election update?
Yes, so I have a staff report which I have submitted to you. I won't read the whole thing. There are three recommendations that I'm looking for council's approval on tonight. We can approve them each separately. The first one I have, the council approved the date of the advance poll to be Saturday, October 12th from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. This will be in addition to the mandatory advance polling station of Tuesday, October 15th from 12 to 8 as per the Elections Act.
Do we want to have a motion for that now?
On the question, your worship, so that means.
It needs to be moved and seconded first.
I move.
This is, this is, you have to have an advance poll, so. Saturday, October 12th.
So read that back again, what are you asking for?
I'm asking for you to approve the advance poll to be Saturday, October 12th from 12 to 8.
Instead of?
Nope, in addition to the mandatory one on Tuesday, October 15th.
Look, we're two advance polls.
You need two advance polls.
Okay, are they going to be written ballot advance?
That's the second motion.
Okay.
So this is just for, you're going to have to have an advance poll regardless.
Yeah, okay, oh, did somebody move on that?
Simon moved.
I'll second it then.
Okay, this is going to be the sticky one. Number two, that council agreed to a full electronic method, internet and phone from Intellavote for the 2024 municipal election.
Your worship, I don't have a, on the question here, I don't have a problem with that. But I sincerely feel that if we're going to go electronics, phone and internet or whatever, that we should have an area here in town for people that are completely.
And they will.
Are they going to?
They have, they will have two advance polls and on Election Day, people will have the opportunity to go to, I think the last time they had it, NSCC. They will have that opportunity to go there and get assistance for telephone and internet voting.
Good.
Okay.
I'll move the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Pence. Moved by Counselor Pence, seconded by Counselor Knight. Any further questions?
So just to be clear, there will be no paper ballots.
Correct. No, there's no paper ballots at all. They will have an opportunity to go and talk to somebody with.
And just. When we do this and when you advertise it, make sure that it is advertised, the fact that we are going to assist people.
And they did that in 2020 as well.
I know they did.
Yeah, and the counsel. Yeah, Counselor Pence and myself, and our biggest concern is for people that don't use the internet, afraid to use the phone. And like my, God love her, the lady live next door to me, she didn't even trust her son to vote for her. She wanted, you know.
So, sorry to interrupt. How is that going to work exactly for us helping them vote? Walk me through it, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
So it would be no different, you walk into, I'm going to assume it's going to be NSCC as it was in the past. You walk into the gym, they will have an information officer at the door checking to see if they're on the voting list. They're on the voting list, you go over here, someone will assist you. They will have a computer there, they will have their ballot, their thing that they receive in the mail with their PIN number. They will go and the person, the polling, DRO or polling clerk will assist them in placing their ballot either by telephone or computer.
Okay, so I'm assuming they're allowed to see the PIN and help them enter the PIN. But then after that, it should be easy enough for them to just click a button?
Correct.
Okay.
Susan. I was reading through it there and it said they're using the provincial and the federal list. Now, what about the newcomers, the new people that are of age to vote now?
Every month, the province updates their voting list with either through mail or through MSI registrations, those kinds of things. That's how they update their list and it's updated monthly.
But this is, so if somebody is not on the list.
They can get sworn in at that place like any other thing.
So they have to go to your advance poll and get sworn in?
Correct. Or they can go visit Josephine McDonald and she can beforehand, and she can set you up.
Oh, go see her, oh, I see. Can they phone it into her, but they have to physically visit, do they?
That's a good question, that I don't know. Yeah, I think you have to physically go see her, but otherwise you can do it at your advance poll or on the day of vote.
Okay, so, yeah, no, okay, and it's just a question, maybe for the future. If there was something set up where people that wasn't on the list, they could go and speak to.
And that's no different than paper ballot was before, you just get sworn in.
Okay, all right, good enough, just as long as they're able to vote.
No.
My question, you mentioned the cost of going paper. So by having these people there to assist, say at the community college with the phone and the, is that going to cost us anymore?
That, so if you were doing paper ballots, you would need three extra staff. But because you don't, you're not going to go paper ballot now, you would only have the original information officer, deputy returning officer and poll clerk.
Okay, so.
That's what you would have anyway.
Because you said like five thousand dollars if we did paper, so.
Yes, and then you would need laptops and that sort of thing for the voting list.
Yeah. And if we do that this year and find out that a lot of people were not happy with that and that the voting numbers.
This is for 2024 only.
Okay, this is one year's deal, see how it goes?
In four years' time, somebody else can make that decision.
Is that been moved or seconded?
That's been moved by Counselor Pence and seconded by Counselor Knight.
Thank you. So if there's no further questions, we had a discussion about it, although in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Motion carried.
And the third and final recommendation I would like your approval is that council approve the electronic voting commence on October 6th, 2024 at 12:00 AM to October 19th, 2024 at 7:00 PM.
Well, I'll move.
Second that.
Moved by Counselor Pence, seconded by Counselor Knight, although in favor of saying aye.
And just for council's information, Josephine McDonald is commencing her returning officer duties on May 1st.
So now that we approved all this, the question that I have is about the logistics of finding out the winner. Because in the last two elections, the media, and no offense, knew before a lot of the candidates. And to be honest with you, you know, that's not really.
I'm going to throw some CAOs under the bus here. The results are sent to the CAOs and it is up to them to notify.
Okay. Hold your responsibility. We'll hold you accountable then, Susan.
I will be auditing, I am an auditor during the election, so I will be there and I will guarantee.
Thank you very much.
Well, I did.
Yes, in 2020, you were acclaimed, Counselor Wong. The one before that, I believe there was a, I think there was the website crash. I think there was some technical difficulties in 2016. Of that, I don't know, I wasn't, that was before my time.
He has sources.
All right, your worship.
Okay, and we want item number 13, open forum, I would like to speak at the open forum. Okay, next council meeting is Monday, May 13th, 2024, 5:30 here at the council chambers. Have a motion to adjourn, please.